All right, we're gonna open this public hearing today's May something, I don't know.
Three.
May three? And it's a, it's a public hearing to hear an application for a change to a conditional use permit for, who's got the official, what is it? Well, from William Palladino for the Shed Restaurant, map eight, lot twenty-one dash one. The way we're gonna run this public hearing for everybody is the applicant's gonna come up and explain what they just wanna do. When they're done, if code enforcement has anything that will, anything that'll shed light on the applicant's application, he'll throw his two cents in. Then the public will get to ask the questions. When that's exhausted, we'll close the public hearing and the board will have that in. All right? Thank you. Mr. Palladino, would you please come up and explain what you'd like to do to the board and the maximum public?
Overwhelming crowd?
Yes.
I'm William Palladino, owner of KB Restaurants and Apple Ridge LLC, which is the potting shed restaurant and Willie's, or the shed restaurant and Willie's Ale Run. We had met a few weeks back and I propose, I'll just go over it again, we're enclosing an existing slab in the rear of the building that's attached to the building and opening up a wall on the inside of the building to extend the space over to looking at the building on the left-hand side. The purpose of the expansion and the change in the, in the conditional use permit is that we are opening up a retail store. The retail store is going to be for novelty items, it's going to be for meats, it's going to be for sodas, it's gonna be for fish, there'll be beer and wine as well, beer, wine and liquor. I have, at this point, spoken to Steve Gagnon, the coordinator, program coordinator for the Department of Agriculture. They have no interest in our inspection. It falls under Scott Davis, who is the state health inspector. I spoke to Scott Davis and when we are ready to permit the facility, he will then come down and do his, his typical health inspection and if there's any guidelines at that point, he will let us know. The state liquor commissioner has been down there. They have approved the site for an agency liquor store with certain conditions as far as the construction goes. That's why I'm here.
All right, Kenny, you got anything to add off it right now?
Currently, he's got a building permit to enclose the existing, was that a loading dock or patio or whatever?
Yeah.
Enclose it for storage, so he's allowed to construct it and use it for storage at this time. So he'd be looking at changing the use of that addition from storage to retail.
All right. Anyone from the public, have any questions, comments? One, two, three. That's very much the company, everybody, the public hearing is closed now. Anyone on the board have any questions, comments, issues?
Do those conditions that the health inspector had mentioned to you, does eventually come to us or does that have nothing to do with us?
It doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with the town, it's the state. Just like the state health inspection that we have to have every year and fire inspection we have to have every year, those are licenses that we have to hold.
Do you wanna be the chair and just sit down at the table or something? You understand?
No, it's all right.
Oh, all right, that's fine. Whatever's comfortable.
Sit all day.
Is there, is there any kind of public hearing at the state level regarding the agency liquor store portion?
No, that's already been granted.
And the liquor permit would be the same one that the tavern is using right now?
Yeah, it's just an extension of that permit. But it falls under the same inspector Larry Sandblom.
And you don't have to go through the sliding frame or more for that?
No, they don't.
You're done with all that?
Yeah. The, the permission or the license is granted by the state and there's no review needed by the town.
All right. All right, now, what's the size of this building for this shed off here?
Twelve by- Thirty-two by twelve.
Uh, what are the daily hours of operation offhand?
We haven't said all that stuff, you know, there's a lot of details that we haven't done yet. One of them is the hours. I'm assuming, you know, probably gonna be between, you know, ten and ten, those twelve-hour period, ten in the morning to ten at night.
Like around the same time your other, some of your other businesses is open?
Uh, well, that, the restaurant doesn't open until four.
Oh, okay.
Except on the weekends it opens at noon time.
What time's the tavern open?
Four o'clock during the week and twelve o'clock on the weekends.
Nobody's in there in the morning for shooters or anything, huh?
Not interested.
So this would, so this would be, yeah, much longer hours then than, than your other stuff?
Yeah.
All right. Different personnel with their, with their, it's a, you know, I mean, you'd have somebody working the store while the store's open, right?
Correct.
They would be running back and forth to the-
Nope. Now, now, it's really, um, when we were running the breakfast side of the shed restaurant, that was eight o'clock in the morning, you know, so it was open eight to one in the morning every day, so. I guess if you look at it, are we increasing the hours now from what it is right now? Yes, we are. Are we increasing the hours based on what we used to do, you know, two years ago? No.
Yeah, no, no, no. Well, I was just wondering, you know, how it was, if it was gonna overlap or tie in with, you know, the tavern or the restaurant at all? No major changes in signage, stuff like that up front?
No, the sign in the front is gonna stay just the way it is. I would probably be looking to put a smaller sign on the side of the building where the entrance will be.
Oh, the entrance to this?
Is on the side of the building.
Oh, okay. Oh, not off the back necessarily. Off the same side, did you go in for the bar then?
Yeah.
All right.
Is it gonna be operated as a separate business or as the same, different part of the ongoing?
No, it's gonna be the same business. It'll be a separate, however I handle it, account-wise is my concern. But it's the same business, basically. Same corporation.
Got a question on the access and right away. This plan is dated 2002. Is this parcel lying on the, that's almost the north. Is that, well, they're doing it under this application right now?
Yes.
Okay. And what is, what is?
Uh, it's about forty, uh, it's twenty feet of the property or forty feet of the property.
And parking would be in the area. Parking isn't an issue, Kenny? Unless at all? How do you work out parking for a retail?
Usually we can look at the square footage, but there's short-term visits too. I mean, if it's just consolidated, the use that we're talking about right now, I don't see there's a huge-
It's a giant lot back there.
It is. And you could have existing customers going in and grabbing stuff on the way out or ones coming off of the peak hours.
Would you maybe designate some of the spots close to the building, close to the back for the, the retail store or have you ever thought about it yet? See, I'm sorry, I'm falling out.
The way the parking works right now, I allow Crawleys to use our parking for the, was it Krabby Bear?
Yeah.
The breakfast place. So, you know, his hours are offset from our hours, you know, they're doing breakfast over there. We don't open up until noon time on weekends and four o'clock in the, on the weekdays.
Yeah.
So there really isn't any conflict with parking, certainly with allowing them to use my parking lot, but, you know, in regards to, so trying to separate the parking and putting signs up would probably just, you know, stir up-
Yeah, no, I was just thinking about, I was just thinking about here and stand with you, well, you know, maybe have a couple of spaces right near the entrance to the retail store for the retail store.
Yeah, I mean, it-
Having, you know, bar patrons party.
Yeah, I mean, we could, yeah, probably, you know, as we go through the thought process, putting, putting, you know, fifteen-minute park in there, you know, for like half a dozen spaces up against the building would, you know, probably make sense for me to do something like that.
Yeah. No, that's honestly, I didn't, I wasn't worried about the other, the other business.
And actually, that's a good idea. I didn't think of that.
Um-
Thank you. Glad we had this meeting.
Anyone else, Tom?
What about the, the old issue of isolating one of these access areas for egress versus access? Is the additional traffic that, um, gonna contribute to any issues that are there now? Or how do you, how do you control that access egress issue with the two pavement breaks?
I don't think he has any rights to that egress for the north, do you? It's not even on his property.
Oh, no, I don't mean this. I mean-
Mine is bad.
What about the issue of, are you in the center?
Right.
Paul, you want to say entrance?
Oh, he, the whole entrance?
Uh-huh. You just told me that the line went to forty feet, like, there's right there. Right here. Okay, so you, okay, you only have one access anyway.
Right.
We had talked with Krabby Bear when they do their flip and they're coming in from the north side, that hopefully that entrance would be eliminated then.
Yeah.
But DOT issued his permit and I don't think that was one of their requirements 'cause there's already an existing entrance for a residential house up there that they'd be expanding.
Um, let's see. So you're gonna, you're gonna end up being an agency liquor store then too?
Yes.
And is there some way that, oh, I just forget it. Um, I've got nothing. Kenny?
In the land use chart, it doesn't specifically say agency liquor store is a permitted use, but you, you can use the area of the use which is similar to the conditional use or use which is similar to the accessory of the conditional use.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't, doesn't say convenience store anyways.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
Uh, just facilities not listed above having the twenty-five hundred square feet of the floor area.
I think you use this which is similar to the conditional use, you think, because lunch about the closes.
Yeah, which would be a conditional use. The facilities not listed above would be a site plan. If it was a new facility, then I would probably say site plan, but he's gonna be existing facility there, so I think it's just the amendment to the conditional use.
I mean, they, they sell food out of the restaurant, they sell alcohol out of the bar. You can go to the restaurant and get food to go, correct?
Correct.
So that's right there, that's-
Yeah, yeah, it's similar.
And, but now, you can't buy out of the bar though, right? You can't walk out of the bar with like a six-pack or anything like that?
No.
No. It's just to be drunk on premises.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Yeah, so that's something that would be different, that's covered by an aspect of the license, not a permit.
Correct.
So just a quick question on this, on this aisle on the north side of your building, is two-way traffic available for your usage of the property? Is that ongoing now? Can somebody be headed east and somebody be headed west simultaneously there?
Yeah.
'Cause there's forty feet plus or less of it.
What do you guys wanna do now? Is there any more information anyone's looking for before we proceed?
Well, Willie, you proposed hours of operation for this.
Ten to ten.
Ten to ten. Is that when the restaurant closes, ten?
No, one.
One?
Mm-hmm.
And would be, how many days a week? Seven? Six?
I don't know yet. Probably not seven, probably would be six, but the restaurant could-
I guess it'll close on Mondays?
Yeah.
What do we want to see with the funding's effect? Unless there's some more information that you don't have, you know, with the-
How did we decide that it's a conditional use?
Use is which is similar to-
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, he already has a conditional use for what he's doing and this is just a, a change to, not unlike the one last week. You know, there was a conditional use for that store, which, by the way, happened to be a convenience store last week.
Yes.
We still don't address.
No.
So.
That's pretty convenient. Um, well, I wouldn't know if we, we can move that over to the application and, uh, the, uh, see if it meets the standards. We'll read through the standards.
All right, who would like to do that?
I'll read them if someone will, will, uh, shut up. No, a couple of them, please. For a second. Hey, use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds.
Aye.
Should we, should we follow the same procedure, voting on these as we go, so we don't have any backpacking?
All those agree? Non-applicable?
Aye.
Super.
B, the use will consider short cover.
Uh, Aye. All those agree?
Aye.
All right.
C, the use is consistent with offensive claim.
Everyone have any issues with that?
I think it is.
All right, good.
B, traffic access to the site may sustain its containing instruments. Kenny, there's no state issues here with access, just, right?
With the access in the road?
Access to, to and from one-on-nine and into within the site. It's a little tight, but, uh-
I, I think as long as it stays a small accessory use to his use that he's got there now, I wouldn't see it as an issue. If it became a full-blown convenience store, then that's something you'd wanna address.
And that may be something we wanna hold on to later on as a condition, but if, you know-
The expansion.
If for whatever reason it became a bigger deal than you had planned on, we may all have addressed something like that at the start.
That would be the trigger. Just when he goes to expand. I mean, he's only got a twelve-by-thirty-two room now, so-
You know, if you decide to throw half of it to bed or something. So as it stands now, are we in agreement that we don't facilitate pounding traffic? Okay, good, super.
It's not an existing, yes.
Site design is in compliance with municipal plan?
Uh, I think that's Aye.
Yeah.
You all agree?
Yep.
All right.
F, adequate provision for the disposal of all waste, well, and solid waste has been made.
Now, how's that gonna be done?
What's that?
Is there gonna be any, any water usage, any bathrooms in there or anything like that?
No.
Does it need to be, is there gonna be any water in there at all, like a spigot or something or a tank?
Could be a sink.
A sink? That's what I was thinking, that's what I was looking for.
Hand wash sink.
Yeah. Um, we're gonna see any issues with that?
Uh, one of the conditions I would have if we end up making it that far is that he's granted all required state permits and we'd look at the septic for his current seating, for how that works, and the amount of employees.
Gotcha.
So if he's not needing additional employees and how that works out, then he's balanced out. And if, 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 uh, the staff is increases and he needs to bring in a few more people to work this, he may need to do something to the septic expansion laws.
All right. Right now, it doesn't appear to be an issue. Agreed?
Yep.
All right.
Um, adequate provision, uh, G, adequate provision for the storage, transportation storage into Spelford when he has his materials as well.
Uh, whether he has his materials or waste?
No.
We're talking just food, uh, bottles and cans of alcohol, right? That's it.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate any, you know, extra meat scraps or fat that he cut off that you wouldn't have much waste in the meat department?
At our disposal anyway.
Right.
We have a dumpster.
Okay, well-
Just like all the scraps.
Just wondering, I mean, it can attract-
Just like the scraps go in from the restaurant.
Right. Same place, yeah.
Yeah.
Bill, just to clarify, is there gonna be any processing within this footprint?
No.
Okay.
All right, we all set on that then? All agree? Super.
How tall is the slab off the, the grade, existing grade?
About three feet.
It's a couple of feet anyways.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have a, a, yeah, I figured it was pretty high off the ground, so you're gonna have a ramp for access to or just steps?
No, there's no access. There's stairs and a porch and there's a door being cut off the side of the building.
On the side over here, you're gonna just have some stairs going up for three feet?
Yeah. Well, actually, if you know, if you know how it's laid out, if you're in the buildings as a handicap route.
Right, there's a ramp right here, yeah, I see it on the drone.
Um, yeah, okay. So that ramp is going to extend back alongside the building, which is right now just the fireplace area.
Well, next to what's his parking lot, next to-
Yeah, it's gonna come down past, past the closet storage.
Yeah, right, okay.
So we're gonna build a wooden ramp from that level, no, or wooden deck, if you would, from that level all the way back. The door to get into the, the store is gonna be down around where the storage area is.
Right.
There'll be handicap access off of the ramp to get into the store.
Through that storage area.
I, I guess if you were drawing it a little bit more accurately, there's, you know, there's a patio up at the top there. The ramp was up to the patio. There's about three feet from the building to the edge of the ramp. There's shrubs and bushes. In that area, it's gonna be a wooden deck. It's gonna be the same level as the patio up there when you get to the top of that ramp.
Right.
So you'll be able to access this, there'll be a handicap access as well.
The fire marshal's office kinda review it for egress anyways, egress and access. Gonna be a little bit of building on the outside too.
Yes, and that's gotta be, don't let safety codes anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, so we all agree with that then? Okay, next.
H, stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five-year storm.
I think that may, um-
We would, we would ask you what kind of stormwater management systems you have in place, if any, right?
Say again?
What kind of stormwater management systems might you have in place now?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't add any more building, we're using the same building, roof square footage.
Right, same footprint.
Yeah.
And there's no more, there's no more roof involved, right? No extra roof?
Probably, there's a shed roof off the back that used to, where the slab used to be, it covers the slab, so in theory, the footprint was over there.
It's obvious. Yeah. And that's all gravel back there, correct?
Yeah.
All right. And they had an original plan when they first, they were doing all this when they were expanding this using them. And that was fine at the time. Uh, anyone see any issues with the stormwater management? All right then.
A, adequate provisions to control the spread of erosion and sedimentation have been made.
All right, what do you have, Aye? All right, agreed?
There's no disturbance, yeah.
J, there is adequate water supply to meet the demands of proposed use and for fire protection purposes.
Um, do you have sprinklers in any part of the restaurant hand or tavern now?
No.
How's fire protection addressed?
There's a, we just had a whole new fire alarm system put in. Hadn't, had to conform to the ADA stuff, so everything that was there was ripped out and it's all been brand new. There's a plan in the state fire marshal's office for us to address sprinklers in three more years.
Oh, all right. This new structure though, it's gonna have its own fire alarms and whatnot?
It's tied into the same system.
Right, but, but they're gonna be in there now, whereas before they might not have been, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Again, it's gonna be inspected by the state fire marshal.
Right, right, right. And you're not gonna be using great amounts more of water to put any stress on the existing well?
No.
I don't blame you, I didn't mean that.
All right? Anyone have any issues with that? Okay, super. What's next?
K, provision for buffer strips and on-site landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties?
Um-
What kind of residential properties do you have there?
Any detrimental features of the development?
Being added or is there still, any residential problems?
This is Krabby Bear, this is residential stuff.
It sounds as if one part was gonna be taken out and a deck and extension of a, a ramp is about the biggest change outside, correct?
No additional big lighting or anything, right? Just the existing lighting outside of-
We probably have one more outside light for the, no?
No.
It's plenty, it's plenty lit back there already.
Yeah, the parking lot was, was designed with the appropriate lighting and no light pollution back when we bought the property. And it's well lit enough that there's no additional parking lot lighting needed.
Yeah.
Uh, the only action might be, you know, the traffic would be dropping back along there. And, you know, do you guys have any idea what type of, how much traffic will be coming in and out of there? Is there some way to figure it out? Some formula? Has nobody did it?
No.
I was wondering.
It's hard because you've got existing customers you're probably-
Yeah, I mean, I think we create our own, just like we create, you know, business in the area by the amount of business that we do do, we create our own, you know, base of customers that are just going to be, you know, attracted to the store for things that they wanna purchase that are-
So you're thinking maybe most of your customers might be people that already use your existing facilities?
Mm-hmm.
You know, they, they like, you know, whatever, you know, they figure out, they buy some and take it home to, yeah, all right, all right. So you're not necessarily thinking it's gonna be a, a destination for shoppers just coming off the road?
But the hope is to catch, to link people too, the four coming up, right, 'cause probably they're gonna stop there and take stuff.
Once they, you know, most, it's a bet, but he's not gonna have any sign out front, so it's not like, you know-
Most anybody stops there, anyway, at some point during the weekend. It's just, I think it's an added convenience for the public.
He's not, not close at this point in terms of traffic volume or-
Close to what?
Close to any tipping point, I guess, beyond which you wouldn't wanna add additional traffic.
Do you, is your-
Or parking, the same-
I was just saying, does your parking overflow out onto the street?
No.
And I remember it used to years ago, prior to you owning it, uh, it was, no, it's on-
Yeah, it's a big special deal.
Just the breakfasts.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The breakfasts they used to-
Yeah, that's before they expanded the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to see as you go by how deep it is and how big it is, but it's, I've never seen it overflowing out past-
Into the street.
We had expanded the parking lot when we bought it.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's not like we're gonna incrementally go over some threshold.
Yeah.
No. I mean, he's probably hoping to hang something in there, but it may not happen.
Yeah, I can envision some times of the day of the week when there will be some craziness going on, but I'm not sure there's really any specific solution we can do because Crowley's up, you know, there's already, it's already a crazy spot.
Any kind of store is gonna be like that, I mean, there's other places in town that sell retail stuff that sometimes through the days it's impossible to get ahead of.
Yeah.
So it's just the nature of the business.
Maybe that's another condition, that if parking ends up so that people do start parking out on the road or something, that that might be then time to go visit them.
Face in the bag.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to imagine.
If you're gonna walk the distance. And what I can see is people double parking like in front of the door.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
That's just for that, right?
That's what code enforcement's gonna, he's gonna earn his money.
I think we manage the facility pretty well, we're not ignorant with what we do, and if there are issues with parking, they get addressed pretty quickly and get managed from inside the building.
It, it's, it's all in your benefit if it does, yeah.
We move a large number of people through there, and it doesn't happen smoothly because we're not paying attention, 'cause I don't think, I don't think it's a concern myself, but.
Anyone else, any issues with this? We all set? Alright, what's next?
Uh, all performances in this area are applicable for the proposed use, will be met?
Yes, we'll see that. Anybody having problems with, that not happening? Alright then. And M and A?
What'd you say?
And A. I want you to sit on that side, step behind that if there isn't.
Don't be dog's head, don't be sorry, man.
Dead.
Now. Uh, what are we looking at for conditions? We've already talked about some, uh, what were they again? Uh, what is that?
Septic, Mr. Paulson.
Septic, well, how do we wanna address that, Ken?
Compliance with all state regulations.
Woo, thanks for coming, everybody. And that would include any additional employees down the road? Everything falls back on the state on top of all that stuff?
That's gonna be the septic, the Fire Marshal's office, the health inspections, liquor license. You've got a renewal fee hours coming up, right?
Yeah.
So he can update the selectmen at that time with his expansion.
The, the state won't issue the license for that space until I'm finished, so it's gonna end up, but then again, it's not gonna be tied into the restaurant tavern license that we presently have anyways, it's a sep- totally separate license, yeah. There's no municipality granting, there's no... It's a state law, there's a certain amount of people in the town, you can have a certain number of agency liquor stores.
And so the agency liquor store requirement will address all of the beer and wine versus the hard liquor and stuff, too, that's why it's a different... I understand what you're saying. So, uh...
So it's not an extension of your current license?
No. The way they're, the way, the way the fee is, it's an extension of my existing fee, they're gonna add it to that fee, but it's a separate, licensing has different governing laws with it than the restaurant tavern license does.
Because it's a convenience store, they're taking all this stuff out versus consuming on the property.
Yep, like I can't have an entrance to the store from inside the restaurant.
Right.
I can have one entrance that's gonna be locked from the other side, so people can't go back and forth.
So there's no intermezzo?
Right.
Do we wanna tie down hours of operation now with the condition? Make it ten to ten, six days a week or something?
Well, I don't know what the hours are gonna be yet, I mean, if we wanna put down hours, I can put down, you know, ten to midnight, or nine to midnight, if you're asking me. I don't think the hours are gonna be that way, but...
But if we're gonna set a condition, there's a way, you know, something you can order with it. Do you foresee yourself opening before nine in the morning for any reason?
No.
So we can start with nine and...
It's not gonna be open any later than the restaurant, so we put twelve thirty.
Is there any particular reason we need to have the hours be a condition?
We usually do. Condition is, we have an idea of when.
So you have an idea?
Of things gonna be operating, yeah. I mean, we, yeah, we send them through the iGenus place.
What were they for iGenus? Was it ten to?
I forget, Jim. It was probably the last.
They won't be changed.
Yeah, whatever the state will allow, whatever the town, it used to be one o'clock or something, I thought.
Does anybody know what, they can be changed, Jim?
Yeah, 'cause they only opened half a week, but they, they got the permission to be open for four hours. They just told, he's running there, they just said he's around there. Those are the, oh, call it.
How, how many hours is Trading Post open?
Twenty-four hours.
Isn't that, and?
I must think there's somebody in there at five in the morning?
No, I, I mean at night.
He's talking at night.
It's the agency liquor store at, at twelve thirty at night that I would...
Well, the liquor store can sell liquor through the convenience store up until one o'clock in the morning.
With liquor, obviously, right?
Yeah.
Right.
I think the Trading Post closes at nine.
Closes at nine in the off-season, closes at ten o'clock during the season. But whatever their hours are, that's their, you know, their choice.
Right.
And you do, part of the idea of this is selling the patients on the restaurant and door of the tavern.
Mm-hmm.
So I can see how somebody in the restaurant, you know, after a late dinner, may wanna pick up something, you know, on the way home. I don't have an issue with, you know, late hours going till, I don't know, whatever, twelve thirty, whatever, whatever the restaurant is now. You know, if the concern basically is, is selling the alcohol, you know, that's, I mean, if the state allows it up until one o'clock, you said, the convenience store?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, seven eleven in town's open, you know, pretty late.
Usually on a chain through the crew is at whatever time.
Eight o'clock, yeah.
You know, they have to, it just keeps everyone.
But, but still, they sell up until the last time they can, right?
So you're there buying right before one, right?
Mm-hmm. He knows about the chains.
They're on Sunday morning till.
Um, so what are we thinking, nine, what'd you say, the restaurant?
One o'clock.
One o'clock? Nine to one, six days a week? I don't have a real, does anyone have any issue with that?
Did you wanna be open seven?
I don't wanna tie it into six days, 'cause I don't know what's gonna happen.
What do you think, are you open seven days a week?
I don't know, but I don't wanna put it in like I'm not going till, I don't have that flexibility.
Yeah, it's good to be in the summertime.
Yeah.
Okay, nine to one, seven days a week?
Can't get that a little bit?
It doesn't mean that, you know, it'll be in there, it just means that these are... Anyone have an issue?
The temptation, I don't know, struggling with the temptation of leaving the bar at eleven o'clock, tipsy, picking up a six-pack for the ride home.
Yeah, I have a level of discomfort with liquor store open after ten, I guess.
How is that gonna be addressed? Somebody coming in there and buying something? Are the people working, selling alcohol, then also have to go through the tips program, whatever it is, are, are, would they be responsible for selling alcohol to someone who then, who was either borderline drunk or was drunk, and then something happened to them? I mean, how is that?
Well, obviously, if you even have alcohol on your breath, in the state domain, you can't be sold alcohol.
Yeah, but...
So if someone goes into the convenience store and has alcohol on their breath, they can't buy alcohol?
Really, you're not supposed to sell anybody alcohol in a convenience store if they smell of, or reek of alcohol, that's what the law is.
Right. The people working, especially, I was gonna say, the people working at night on this convenience store, this retail store, they're gonna have to go through some kind of a program to be able to judge who they can and can't sell alcohol to, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Now, is that also part of the state licensing?
No.
Or is that something that we should require? Or, you know...
I mean, again, we're, we're open and functioning, the entire business, late hours with the appropriate staff.
Right. But when they leave.
It's a, yeah, when, when people leave there, but it's also, you know, it's not like they're removed from us, you know, we know who's going in there, there's a person that is going to be working in there.
Well, I know that, but they're not, you know, they may not necessarily know who's coming out of the bar and going in there.
I can tell you this, that nobody gets in a car and drives away from up there without being spoken to by two different people. Every person that leaves there.
Now, would that, would that also happen if they come out of the convenience store?
And that person stands outside at the bottom of that ramp.
Oh, so it's, and they would also sit in the convenience store then?
Yeah.
They would see somebody coming out of the bar and going into the?
Yeah.
Store?
I mean, we, we run a pretty tight ship as far as people go and the responsibilities.
Is your existing waitstaff and bar staff, is it mandatory, did we write that into the conditions, that they, they are, have gone through the tips?
Right in, because they all do.
Yeah, and, and these, these guys brought it up to a serious problem when we were first going through this with the taverns, that we're all gonna have to, people go through these programs, and it may not be required now, I don't know.
We actually brought somebody in to the building to train when we first opened up.
Yeah, but it's driven by your insurance company more than the state, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the insurance company wants copies of certificates because it affects the insurance premium, um, I mean, it's just overall, I take, I take a lot of pride in what we do up there as far as managing people leaving that place.
So what happens?
I'm sorry, Kelly, go ahead.
So what happens if the gentleman at the bottom of the ramp feels like someone's too tipsy to drive?
Well, he's capable of controlling it. People don't drive away, people don't get in their car, and under any circumstances if it's, if it's like that. We'll take somebody's keys away. It does happen.
Resting to the ground? See the guy over there?
As a matter of, as a matter of regular business, would you have a security camera in the convenience?
Yeah.
Do you mind if we made that a condition?
No.
I, I would suggest, after the discussion we've had, that we make, as a condition then, that the convenience store staff, particularly during the evening hours, the, the trainees through the tips program and that a security camera be in that facility to cover the cash register area, whatever.
I'd eliminate the word evening hours, okay? If they're gonna be trained and he says they are, get rid of the word evening hours.
Right, this is my, there you go. And there's gonna be drunks, there could be.
Yeah, yeah.
Drunks coming in during the hour, see?
We have to be concerned about it, 'cause certainly could be people driving up from down the street, or, not to direct it there, I mean, off of 109, to rephrase it, so there's no, not taken the wrong way, that people are, you know, intoxicated coming into the store to, to purchase booze or beer or whatever, so I mean, there's a responsibility for us anyways to manage even the general public that comes in off the street. Not everybody is going to come in out of the, out of the restaurant, like, inside the building.
They could be driving a golf cart.
Yeah.
Up from the campground?
Yeah.
That's just process.
Maybe one other condition, that no parking will be permitted on 109 at, at any time relative to this facility.
Well, we've got facilities up there that, that hasn't been addressed for them, and I think there's sometimes in the year, when the other facilities up there do that over four o'clock.
Well, just with this facility, is that all that matters?
Well, it's kinda hard to do, because there's apple picking season that lasts a couple months, that they park all over 109, um...
That hopefully is changing where they built the bond across the streets, so it's a lot of, yeah.
Okay, but there's no restrictions as far as anybody goes up there right now, they're presently, I mean, in people parking on 109, it's a state highway, so if it's, if it's, people are parked there and it's an issue, then it's addressed from, you know, a traffic standpoint with the, either the state police or the sheriff's department. Right?
I hope it's sort of just saying, one business happens to be there, when there's a couple other businesses involved.
It's true, the other business is coming back in shortly to revise his conditional uses, so if it was one for this business, it could be added to the next. But I don't see it as a big issue, as he said, if it's a traffic issue, the state police would move along, and hopefully with Krabby Bear expanding to the other side, it's gonna increase his parking also, and the apple picking is now across the street too, so that's gonna relieve.
And they all kinda switch different times of the year and days and things like that?
You can't, you know, you have to put up some kind of signs there, so that people know where they couldn't park and where they could. What about that guy, somebody who's, you know, the next house down?
Yeah.
What if he has a parking, he's got some friends that show up, how do we know whose cars belong to work? I suppose we could, maybe we could put, if parking on 109 becomes an issue, maybe we can address it later, but I don't see there's a problem now, I don't know that it's, I, I think it would be, how would you enforce it? We're not gonna know what part of the park is parked out there when they're going.
Okay.
And the whole point of this is stuff that can be more or less enforceable, just don't throw stuff out there that, you know, doesn't have any teeth. But, this is me. Uh, one of the businesses, what else are we talking about?
If they expand?
Excuse me?
Do we have something about it?
If he needs, slash wants to expand the business, he's gonna come in for a permanent here.
Yeah, that's in the ordinance already.
Right, yeah.
We, we never did settle on hours, what are we gonna do with hours?
The other reason, nine to one, seven days a week.
We didn't agree on that, just for what was kicking around, originally we had ten to ten, six days a week, so.
That's true.
I don't know, I think seven days a week's fine, and I kinda like ten to ten, but, I don't know.
Well, yeah, if, if, Bill's gonna take on the responsibility of making sure that nobody gets served, not to be served, I guess that's his, that's his issue, so I would, I would move we make it, like, nine to one?
Mm-hmm.
Jesus.
Again, these are just parameters, and...
What does that mean?
Well, that means not before nine, not after one o'clock.
Okay.
Maybe seven days a week. They may end up going ten to ten, they may end up going, who knows, ten to eleven, they may end up going eight to ten, eight at night, who knows? But they've got, you could deal with that.
I think nine to twelve is adequate, but... What do we do, vote on it, it's a board?
Uh, we gotta have some kind of mill sizes, or what do we like? Our food? Gotta pick one way or another, nine to twelve, one to one.
People get tired of that.
Nine to twelve, I mean, if you're gonna go nine to twelve, you might as well go nine to one, but, um, I consider a potential issue, somebody coming out, they want authority to continue, go to camp or something, they're gonna, they're gonna need to get some beer or wine or something, and the one person gonna be able to get it right there, so he's gotta, you know, carry his end of the road and monitor that stuff.
But a true professional's gonna have plenty at home. So it's just to get home, it's just like...
Just enough to get home. It's a fantastic, is it a one-sixth doctor, or a two-sixth doctor?
It's, um, a movie one. It's a movie one. It's similar to the meat, most people with the campers going to the grocery store, grab all this stuff and go, and then probably pick up a little here and there, it's not going to be specifically...
I, I just feel that after twelve o'clock, uh, people get tired, somebody get tired, everybody gets stuck.
Everybody should be home with their bag.
Is that what the board wants, is that the consensus, nine to twelve?
Maybe you wanna, you guys wanna restrict it more, is that the...
I don't, nine to twelve, so I'm proposing. I make a motion that the hours of operation be nine to twelve, seven days a week.
I can tell you this, from my meeting with the state records back there, that he told us that we could operate, we would be licensed to operate till one o'clock in the morning.
Agents being conflicted with the town, and more stringent would apply.
Right. I mean, yeah, and then...
And I'm not saying we are, I mean, there's gonna be, you know, during the winter hours, we could be closed at seven o'clock or eight o'clock.
Right.
I just, you know, yeah, you know, it might not even be open, you know, six days or seven days, it might be open two days, it might be open just on the weekends, it might not be open at all, I don't know.
And that's what we're doing here, we're giving you these parameters. Nine to twelve, seven days a week, doesn't mean you have to, time that you know.
It's giving you the latitude to be open those hours.
Right, and which is the same thing the state says, the state says you can be open until one o'clock. Fine, that doesn't mean you have to be.
Correct.
And I think, I don't know, but it appears that's where the town's coming from. So, is that where the town's...
Our second term's motion, we make it nine to twelve.
All right, any further discussion? So, so the logic to this motion is then just to make sure that it's not open when the last call comes up in the bar, so that people can then carry on. In other words, they would have, logically say, oh, I gotta go out of here before twelve, or...
But it might as well stop by, throw up the trunk, and go back to the bar.
There'd be the convenience store last call first, and the last call...
That'll be interesting.
How often we make it at twelve thirty, would that be acceptable?
I already made the motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
It's just that we don't have a police force, we're relying upon state and county and...
Well, we're doing it, you know, we're doing that anyway with any place that sells alcohol.
I know.
You know, again, somebody coming out of the store down by the dam, or down by the bridge at, you know, ten o'clock, you know, we, where in shape is anyone coming out of this place at one o'clock? So, I don't have an issue with the one o'clock myself, but, anyone else have any comments on the nine to twelve? So, we're looking at Tom and Jessica, Yoli, and Arthur.
Well, I should write one.
Pardon me?
One.
No, what I'm saying is, for the vote, for the vote. So, almost in favor of nine to twelve, yeah, nine to twelve, raise your hands. One, two, three, okay, so it's nine to twelve.
And may we, may we write in as a condition that there be a security camera that can view the sales area within the store?
Did you lay on your right, Kelly?
I, yeah, I would suggest.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you would have one on that anyway, but you would also probably have one, I mean, you may have a couple of cameras in there, correct?
Yeah, I, there, there's gonna be a camera.
Right.
Do you have one on the ramp currently?
Pardon me?
Do you have one currently on the ramp entrance to the bar?
Just a person stationed there.
Just a person, you don't have a camera as well?
There's plenty of cameras up there.
There are, yeah.
Where I have is...
Yeah.
Does your insurance company require the cameras?
No.
It's something you just do on your own.
I think you wanna look at that condition more, if you're gonna require it, as far as, are we gonna require a videotape be kept for so many days, you know, why are we actually requiring it? Because if there's an incident, somebody can go see it, or, you know...
Your dire overstepping boundaries as far as privacy issues go.
Exactly.
And, yeah, that'll turn into something else.
Well, I think it's a good idea for you to have your register anyway, right?
Correct, however we retain, you know, video copies is not governed by anybody.
Right, yeah, we don't have, yeah, we don't have the right to look at anything.
Well, you just require him to have a camera, there is he gonna be required to record it to, what's he doing with it? Is it gonna be a fake camera? When I go to do the inspection, what am I looking for?
An actual working surveillance camera.
That goes into a system that records, or...
Well, that depends on your system, because you, you might be monitoring, and you might have people looking at it.
You can't, you can't enforce having a video camera.
I just...
I have video, I have video cameras out of my own choice.
You can't, and you can't, and you can't tell me how, you can't, you would never have access to those, to any part of that. I don't think we're talking about access.
Well, yeah, but then...
Then again, will I require it?
If it's nothing that we can, if it's nothing that the town can enforce...
Why make a condition out of it?
And, yeah, because there's nothing we can do about it. If he has one chained on the, the, the sales counter, we don't know if it's on or off, we don't know if it's live or dead, we don't know anything about it. And we don't have a right to access it.
The liability, the liability's all there.
We can't enforce, we cannot enforce it.
Somebody could.
Right, it's just, when you, if you think of it as a public welfare issue, you're guarding the would-be, uh, individual or family that might be involved in the accident, they, they have a little safeguard on, on behalf of Bill's willingness to, to have a camera there that's operating, so that if, God forbid, it would happen, the public would have some recourse to...
You were talking about putting it behind the cash register, you weren't talking about spying on the entire parking lot?
No, I didn't say that, I said in the sales area, just to cover the counter.
Well, I can imagine having an accident there, but...
Well, not there, you would just be monitoring individuals.
You're monitoring individuals, it's just, it's another safeguard besides having the, you can't enforce the steps program either, but you're, it's just a safeguard.
Well, we can know, we can know whether the people are certified, and whether they're...
And we can know that Bill has an operating camera, you can just write something out for Kenny if asked that the cameras are operable. That's all I'm suggesting, it's, for that matter, then, you know, why wouldn't you be trying to enforce security cameras in the bar and restaurant?
I don't want to put salsa sales out of all our town. See, we're getting hung up on the time of day, and that's not the issue necessarily.
Well, I think we did, we were talking about cameras with Mr. Han initially, when his, uh, operation for the bar opened up, I'm pretty sure.
I think that was at his suggestion, though. I think they do this because it looks out for their own interests.
Well, it cuts both ways, it helps out the public, if the public, um...
No, I don't see how it helps out the public.
It'd be after the fact, unfortunately, I think if...
Yeah, right, it serves no purpose. Well, it doesn't, it, it does serve a purpose, because it's a deterrent in, in...
How is it a deterrent if, how?
They've, they've got cameras in banks and stores, and they get robbed all the time, it's not a deterrent anything.
The more deterrent would be in terms of the person doing the sale.
Right.
Not the person making the purchase.
Okay. Are you gonna have a camera there, Kenny? Maybe not now.
Not now.
I don't think it's not just for the people, it's for the employees.
If there's no, if there's no documentation of what is transpiring at that counter, then nobody who was wronged by an incident at that counter has any recourse.
I don't think that we should make it, I don't think we should be helping anybody. No, I don't think that's a part of that, I don't think that's, I don't think that we should be involved, looking out for somebody who...
It's a public welfare issue, that's what I, that's the way I would frame it, but anyway.
It's a broader issue.
Thank you.
I mean, if, well, if there's an accident, they learn that alcohol's involved, they trace back where the driver that was under the influence came from, and ends up back there.
Okay. It's a police issue. So, we're gonna drop any, we're not gonna have them in there, but we're not gonna require it, is that where we're, where we're at?
That was my thought.
Oh, thanks, you left my room. I actually went free to die. All right, what else are we looking at? Uh, what else, did we talk about anything we haven't mentioned yet?
The only four things I have is the septic, the hours, the days, and the tips.
Okay, the septic is reworded as granting, granted all required state permits.
With all state provisions for...
And that, that covers anything that...
Family marshal food service with the license, septic issues.
The sign, with the come before Kenny for the sign, right? To come before Kenny with the sign design?
They would have to, yeah.
Yeah. And again, it's just to be on the side of the building, correct? Nothing more on that.
Correct.
All right, you wanna, can I see that again first?
The conditions, I have the septic compliance with all state provisions, including...
Well, how about just compliance with all state provisions? That includes what you were talking about?
That's right.
So, they're even bound to put the septic in there, correct?
Yeah.
Just compliance with all state...
Provisions, right?
Licensing provisions, or whatever Kenny said.
Hours, nine to twelve, it was a three to two vote, Tom cashing, Gavin.
Well, it was Tom and Yoli and Art.
Well, that was the motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that, okay. I put Kevin's answer right, so, really.
Good point. The days are seven...
I can still second the motion, that's reserved.
It'll be not, that would...
Chip said I can second it, but I ain't, it didn't matter if you opened it, you just seconded the motion. I voted too, but...
Yeah, but it wasn't counted.
And the days, seven days a week, tips program for all staff.
Good answer.
Got it?
Right, you can vote all you want, yeah.
He's gonna go home early.
Bill's done, I mean...
Yes.
Oh, I don't know what you said. Well, you guys speak on that.
I'm sorry.
You also, how many, how many provisions were it?
Four. Compliance with all state licensing provisions, that means all the, all the ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Hours, nine to twelve, days, seven days a week, and the tips program for all staff.
All right, anything else you wanna add to this? All right, then, do we have a motion to grant a conditional permit with these conditions? No, sorry, up to that. Any more, everybody?
Want me to motion two, please?
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? Initials permit for the convenience store at the back of the Shed Restaurant, uh, with the four provisions, four conditions, all right? All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, nay? We're gonna do it.
Did you do anything there?
Yeah.
That's right, you were just like...
Good one.
Thank you.
Nothing else to tell me, I can't go, bud. All right, let's take a little minutes for, uh, April nineteenth. Mike, I thought you were going to be, you're ending? Yes.
I'm gonna type it up.
She'll type it up. But you can go ahead, we're looking at the building all the time, sure.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Kenny, Kenny?
He's coming back in, yeah.
He's not, but it's on the nineteenth, we probably not moving that house back, I had no idea.
I wasn't here. That's, he wanted to move that back twenty feet, he was twenty.
Was twenty, okay, good. All right, I can't a motion, you guys are ready on the nineteenth?
In the morning, or?
Motion to what?
No, to accept the minutes.
Which one?
The nineteenth.
Yeah, I think that was pretty good. Make a motion, you will accept the minutes for the nineteenth.
Anything to say?
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, aye? All's opposed, nay? As you're done.
Thank you.
Who is up first?
It's the third.
How about the twenty-sixth? Last week's public hearing.
Maybe accept the minutes for the twenty-sixth.
You have a second? That's just a line.
If I didn't second it, I seconded it.
Yeah, it was here, go ahead.
I seconded it.
He was a voting member, I mean...
Any further comments, questions? All's in favor, aye? All's opposed, nay? That's done. All right, sidewalk, this coming Monday, be here at quarter to six if you wanna carpool up there, I'll meet you moves up there, six o'clock. At, what's the address?
We're, we're meeting here at six.
Look in the mirror.
We're meeting here at six.
I thought it was, I thought it was gonna be at the place at six.
Six thirty at the place.
Oh, six thirty?
I read it on the paper, it said...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah, it is. It's just in the paper, it just...
It was just, the sidewalk. The Anthony Plainbourn Hall sidewalk on May seventh, two thousand twelve, at six P.M. at one forty First Road. You'll meet here at five forty-five if you're gonna carpool.
Is that where it put in the paper, I copied, I'm shocked.
That's what I saw.
Okay, good.
That's what I saw. I didn't, let's know that we decided, but whatever. Always minutes different, and I'm not gonna be here.
Well, yeah, you, yeah, what you said in the minutes was you'd meet here at six. You decided to meet in carpool from the town hall at six. So, just here, five minutes early, it won't take six minutes to get there. It's just up the road and over.
Yoli feel better?
Yeah.
At least I'm still pretty good.
So, just get down across the six o'clock is one forty First Road. Now, Kenny gonna be able to be there?
Maybe.
How about the contract, you see it on the...
Just fill in these, excuse me.
Still Paul. Uh, so your plan, your suggestion was to move the building back twenty feet?
Behind the existing structure, just build it right behind it, this is about twenty feet.
So, the front of the new building will be...
The back of the old, basically.
Okay, so that's all it's basically doing.
Yeah.
All right, and it's gonna be torn down, a new foundation, anything put in?
Yeah.
New septic.
Right, new septic, this is gonna be up top again. Uh, are there some trees that probably would need to be expunged?
Yeah, this is a cluster.
No, I guess not.
What would happen if we decided, so leave it there? Does that give you a problem?
I think if there's room to move it back, I mean, sure choice, whether, I mean, when the D.E.P. rides around and sees and it looks like there's room to move it back, whether they would say something or vaporize.
I mean, unless you knock us out.
Exactly, no, it would be, I mean, if the construction was done, I don't understand why it wasn't that fair, that's it. A lot of other communities don't move anybody back, not the other.
Really?
They, they, where they are.
The state doesn't, does the state care one way or another very much, or is this something that we've just done as a habit?
It's a state regulation, and those communities usually, uh, ignore it, address, slash, ignore.
Uh-huh, so it is a regulation, you try and move it back as much as you possibly can without making a bigger disturbance.
You're reducing the effort.
Exactly.
Right, right, right.
And each time you do it...
And each time you do it, especially we had a, a lot, like down the Cove, or certain sides of the Great East, once you see over time, that one moves back, then another moves back, and then one in the middle moves back, it, it all works.
Right, 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 all right.
And that, that, you didn't talk to the contractor about how that ditch was gonna be dug?
No.
Okay, that would be kinda, it was like, interesting to know when they're looking at the site, but...
Could we leave him a message?
Put a piece of equipment in there on it?
Yeah, it's, they'll have to put a piece in there eventually, yeah. Kenny, could we leave him a message, the contractor, a message to please, if he could, prior to our site visit, um, flag trees that would have to be taken down with the proposal as it was presented by you to us?
Well, he's been out of town, right, you know if it's coming back in time?
I think, I think, I think it's common sense.
Yeah, but has a message been left at the contractor that would be on the property?
No, because Linda was on vacation for two weeks.
But you can just, oh, I think it's, it's gonna be next week, too?
No.
No, I think he's in town Saturday, gets back in town.
I didn't know anything till tonight, by the way.
Oh.
Well, we might give him a call and just ask him if he would maybe help us with that.
Well, just leave a message, just say that there's gonna be people standing around the property, six o'clock on Monday, with concerns about where the place is gonna be located.
Concerns about what trees have to be taken down in order to move it back? What trees he's planning to take down?
Uh, the place is gonna be locked down, what are the dimensions of it? Have you got that on something?
Wasn't on the agenda tonight, so.
Oh.
Bring the file up.
Ten minutes, let's ten minutes. Ninety-one feet, ninety-one square feet extra.
The footprint is not changing, second...
Well, the impervious is going up by ninety-one feet, and the footprint's going from, what, forty-nine to three hundred and forty?
Well, well, yeah, wait, wait, I was looking at the wrong minutes.
All right, just, just out of an idea. All right, anyone else have anything?
Um, just two things, maybe can we get, re-engage with the stormwater ordinance next time and just talk about, maybe what might be happening over the course of the spring and summer? And could Linda help us with a reprint, that reprint, Linda, that you shared with me the other day of, from, Linda Shire, subject steering committee agenda, uh, the date on it was, uh, April eleventh?
Yeah.
Um, there was a lot of, uh, good information in there that pertains to it, whatever.
So, you want a copy for everybody?
I, I would suggest that would be useful, yeah. Hopefully, we can email a lot of it to people, um, and we just gotta watch our budgets. And if we can, if you guys can receive minutes via email and don't read them printed, that'd be great.
Snapper in hammer.
No, we don't have them printed.
You know, just look at every, how you're saving them and keep them, we'll print them, but if, a lot of them are left on the tables down there, we're just wasting ink and paper.
Not much.
No, I mean, you, you're archived for thirty years back.
Well, there's that, um, no, I understand what you're saying, this, Tom's talking about, how many pages was that?
Tom's got it in his hand. Yeah, that just, that we can just read, we don't have to read that.
Read me.
Is that...
But that's continuing.
I emailed it to everybody already.
No, I think it wasn't the same, I think...
Maybe we should just note down what it's called, so we can look in our email.
I asked her to.
Yeah, yeah.
It's ten pages. What's it entitled, that it would be in the email he's on?
We have three of those pages.
Um, steering committee agenda. Steering committee agenda. And it came from Linda Shire to Kenny Paul. That's us. We had a inefficient HP, and we've just got a real copier now, as they are.
Maybe, maybe, stuff like that could be on a, you know, whoever wants it, if you email it to us, fine.
Because the steering committee's gonna be continuous all summer long.
Yeah, right.
And, I mean, ten pages, times eight people.